All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular board and public hearing. The date is December 21st, 2023. The time is seven o'clock. Could we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bendy?
Here.
Commissioner Grau?
Here.
Commissioner Halting?
Commissioner La Duke?
Here.
Commissioner Matza?
Here.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Here.
Bless you.
Would anyone like to amend, add, or delete an item to the current agenda? Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? All right. The Park Board will now hold a public hearing on the 2023 proposed tax levy for the Park District pursuant to the Cook County Truth in Taxation Act. We will first explain the reasons for the levy and any proposed increase. The amounts of money exclusive of levies for debt service and election costs estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation pursuant to the proposed levy of the Park District for the levy year 2023 is $6,512, $506, which will represent, which represents a 6.35% increase over the amount extended for the preceding year. The increase in the proposed 2023 tax levy is for the purpose of keeping pace with inflation and reflected in the Consumer Price Index and to capture new growth. All persons desiring to be heard will now have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to the 2023 proposed tax levy. First, are there any written or oral comments from the commissioners? Are there any written or oral comments from the public? I move to adjourn the public hearing of the Board of Park Commissioners. Any discussion? We have a roll call.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner La Duke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes. All right, I move to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of Thursday, December 7th, 2023. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I move to approve the closed minutes as identified in Exhibit A and maintain these minutes in the closed meeting records of the Park Ridge Park District, finding good cause exists to maintain them as confidential. Any discussion? Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner La Duke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-8, a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner La Duke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes. And then on to the reports. I just have a quick, I just want to thank everyone for their hard work at Wildwood. I know I got there early and saw a lot of people doing miraculous work. They were doing a great job and looks great. Thank you to the staff for all the time and effort they got into that. Looking excited. I'm very excited for the public to get to see what we saw tonight. So, thank you for that. And attorney report, is there anything? And if Executive Director Moncaso?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Start out with the great news. We got our confirmation this week that we are confirmed for the $150,000 DCEO grant at Hinckley. So Jennifer Migna did a lot of work, background work with the paperwork, but this came from Senator Markworth, that is no longer Senator, but that was part of that whole DCEO. You know, we had certain projects allocated and this was one of the bigger ones. So, we will be getting those funds and that will go towards the five to 12-year-old playground for Hinckley, for the Hinckley project. So, that was good, good to hear. The second piece of news, I did email the commissioners today. Not sure if everybody was able to see it, but we got informed that on Monday evening, the Cook County Board passed the paid leave for all workers, which was originally, park districts and school districts were exempt from this and, which we still are from the state legislature, but the Cook County Board on Monday night passed it and did not, took the exemptions for park districts and school districts out, is how we understand it. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of information still that we have questions on. We're working with our attorneys. We're also, I've been working with, I think there were 75 districts on the thread today about trying to advocate and explain to the Cook County Commissioners what a burden this will put on the district, or potentially put on the districts. How the act is, is, just in general, it's, you have to pay all workers, seasonal, part-time, full-time, one hour for every 40 hours worked. So, we do not, I mean, we give part-time staff, I believe, a day? Or, we give them something. Depends on their category, right? On the hours they worked. So Karen had a great example of this today when we were looking at all this. It's like if a lifeguard is working for us in the season, and of course, they're going to meet this 40 hours, you know, we're going to have to give them, I mean, most of them would, a whole week off, right, during the season. So, it's like, when are they going to take it? So, if they're not working, then somebody has to be there doing that job, right? So, we have not had time to look at or analyze the total effect of this, you know, a estimate for the district. And so, what's happening now is we're all contacting our county commissioner. I would encourage the board, if you have any contacts there, but we are trying to explain to them that we were exempt and this law goes into effect January 1st and, you know, it doesn't give a lot of time to work out all the particulars and, you know, we don't budget for this. And so, there's a lot of unanswered questions. We're hoping that they understand that, you know, the nuances of park districts in terms of our types of employees and what a burden this would probably put on park districts. It's also, like I said, I can't speak about the school districts, but I understand that that is occurring. Now, there, there is something in there that the city can come out with a, basically, not follow it, I'm, what's the word?
Exemption.
Exemption, yeah, for that.
Homeral.
Homeral exemption. And that would mean that they would pass something at the city resolution, whatever it may be. But if that happens, we're not so sure, you know, how that will affect us, right? So, this is also new that, you know, there's questions. Poderm has come out with a information on this this week. And so, everybody's just kind of scrambling and trying to figure out what this all means to us, but it's not, as it stands now, it is not set to be enforced until February 1st. So, we've talked to our attorneys and we're like, let's just see how this plays out and we'll have to come to the board with policy if it's, if we have to follow it. So, that's what we know at this point. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, with the short timeframe, has there been any districts trying about, say, joining together to file for emergency injunctive relief?
I, I think that our way of doing that is, oh, go ahead.
About what other districts are doing. The issue with the, I just want to touch on the city too. If they do pass an ordinance that would exempt the city and employees within the city, like the city of Chicago has a paid leave ordinance for every employee that works within the city. But at this time, I don't, you know, suing the county over a legislative act probably wouldn't be particularly successful just because the, they have, they're a homural unit of government as well. So, their legislative power is fairly strong.
So, I mean, it's more of the fact explaining to them that from a couple of people, and again, this is just through emails, but a couple of directors that have talked to their county commissioner, a few of them didn't even know park districts were included from what the, you know, like I said, this is just third-hand, right? And hopefully, somebody will, you know, push and support the districts. You know, I would assume that hopefully they will, so.
I think, I think the problem that, like Jen pointed out, is you, we already have our budget fixed. And to say in a month, we have to do something totally outside that we've never had to do before.
Exactly.
They should at least exempt it until.
We're hoping, we're hoping. That's what I asked, when I sent the email, that I asked at the very least if they could push it, you know, so we have time to understand what this means, right, to us.
I mean, this sounds absolutely really burdensome.
Right. This is called the unfunded mandate.
Right. So, it's just, I can't imagine that there couldn't be some sort of legal maneuver that could be applied.
Right. Well, we're working with all the attorneys, so we're talking to all the right people and, you know, we're putting, we're trying to explain to the Cook County Commissioners, you know, what this means to the district.
So, they just passed something that was already passed by the state?
And they made it more.
It's very, it's, it's very close to the state Paid Leave for All Workers Act, which was passed earlier in 2023. The only, the difference that's relevant, again, is that like the state statute exempts school districts and park districts. In terms of like the county's legislative intent, that exemption, if they intended not to exempt schools and parks, it might be a bit of a steeper uphill battle to, you know, advocate for that legislatively because again, that's a huge difference. So, we're, we're going to look into the statute a little more. Our labor and employment team has dealt with the new state statute and is looking at the county ordinance that was just passed this week, so.
It seems like it's duplicative unless they're just trying to get us to do it.
I, I would say that. The local, the regulations between the state and the county, the enforcement is a little different. So, I think the enforcement on the county level, I'd guess, is going to be, it might be a little trickier to manage frankly because they're a smaller unit of government than the state agency, the Department of Labor, who's going to be enforcing the state statute. So, the nuances of how it will be enforced and again, even just interpreting it to know what it means for park districts and school districts is something that.
Well, what is the intent of passing something that's already been passed statewide?
Um, if there, I, again, if they're like, so for example, like Cook County has different, has had a different minimum wage law for a long time. So, it's a little stricter for people in Cook County and then in like different, you know, different municipalities have some minimum wage laws as well. So, I don't, I think the, beyond the exemption, I haven't, I don't know what's different about the, the, it's the, it's one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours worked. That's the same. The way it accrues, I think, is the same. So, it's, it is confusing. It seems duplicative, like you said.
So, we will keep you posted on that.
I have a question. So, how do we handle paid leave right now, refresher on, for like the different categories?
I don't have all that in front of me.
Okay.
Because it's different for all employees.
That's what I figured. I just didn't.
We don't, they have to work up to, if they're part-time or seasonal, they have to work up to a certain amount of hours and it's a day or two, is from my memory. But I don't want to quote that because.
For like seasonal, summer?
Yeah, and it's mainly for, yeah, right.
Well, and it's, I guess I'm also baffled on the short timeframe between passing and inaction when this is not like preventing some sort of, it's not like you're preventing due process violations or something like, right? It's not like you're trying to assist a protected class. Like, there just seems to be no justifiable reason for the incredibly short timeframe between passage and enactment. Like, this was not, it's almost like they're passing it on an emergency basis with that short of a timeframe. And that's why it just, it seems like there should be some sort of legal recourse, some form of injunctive relief that should be available under these circumstances. Because, yeah, I'm sure we're not alone in being a park district that has already set our budget. Like, well, hopefully the pull of the school district, the school lobbies.
I did also reach out to the two, to the District 64 and Maine Township superintendents and also to the city. And I'm waiting, you know, this was, this all just happened very quickly. So, that's where we're at with it. I can't explain any of your, you know, just have to go with information in front of me at this time.
Sorry.
In terms of the budget though, we did talk about it. We, you know, once we know more, we will take that information and analyze it based on what we are passing in the budget. We do have until about a week before the next meeting to alter those accounts if we need to. So, it's not too late. However, we also, if you remember, have 10% of appropriation in these accounts. And when we were looking at it today, it, those are our bigger accounts, right, our salary accounts. So, we'll look at all of that. It's, you know, and also, the burden is operations, right? It's not just the finances because the example we gave about the lifeguards, you know, then that's more of a, you know, scheduling and covering our facilities. So, I did also point that out to our Cook County Commissioner.
And administration.
And administration, yes, yes.
I mean, God knows, we struggle enough to find people to cover things like lifeguarding, right? Like, this is just, I don't know. I mean, it seems like tailor-made for an unduly burdensome, burdensome claim.
And of course, if there is a litigation strategy that comes out of our, you know, our labor and employment attorneys and Dirk and I are certainly cognizant that there might be some kind of recourse in the courts, then again, the expense of that and that's another balancing act. So, again, going up against the county when they've passed something legislatively is an uphill climb. But again, if there's political support for something like that with, among different park districts, that might be an option. But our labor and employment group is looking at the ordinance carefully.
We, and one of the directors that was on this thread reminded us all, the last time this group was together discussing things about the county was in 2021 or two, I have to look at the date, but when, remember when they came back with that legislation on COVID that the school districts could have sports and then we, only at the school districts and the park districts couldn't. And so, we were, we were successful in changing that. So, we're all, we're all pretty optimistic that, you know, they'll understand. I'll keep you posted.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the law too much. I read through the state when it first was being reported. It was, my understanding is, is it still like the 90-day provisional period? So, what's typical, like for part-time lifeguards, like are they here more than 90 days?
No, it's about 90. It's close to 90 days.
So, would it?
It's 90 days that they have to be working, right?
In order to start using.
Right.
And he uses the word must.
Right.
So, how much wiggle room is in the word?
My understanding, and I'm not an attorney and I'm not an expert on that, but my understanding was if they're, they're less than 90 days, the park district wouldn't have to pay out to the lifeguards that time?
Just have, yeah, I think.
Yeah, because they can accrue, they'll accrue, they can accrue it in those 90 days. They just can't use it, which I think is to manage the administrative and scheduling burden that has arisen. And again, there are a lot of non-home rule units that were not exempted from the state statutes, like libraries and some of our other.
Special reps were not.
Government colleagues. So, in terms of like recruiting it and then paying it out versus not using it, I, I, if they've accrued it in the 90 days and they won't be using it in the seas, the year they're employed, I, I think it might need to be paid out. But again, that's a, so, again, it's, it is a rolling administrative nightmare because if they accrue it, instead of front-loading it, there's this whole system for how you can earn your paid, your paid dime off, take it for any reason, no reason at all. It's a, it's been a puzzle for everyone who's dealing with it. So, we continue to look into it, both at the state level and at the county level now that they've passed the ordinance.
It could also be a new policy where they just front-load that amount.
There is, that's a choice, right? They can front-load it, a district could front-load it.
Like five days and then it would cover that group or whatnot. So, my, there's solutions, hopefully.
Right. We'll figure it out like we always do. That's all I have, other than wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, whatever you celebrate.
Thank you. I guess I'm popular tonight. I got a lot to talk.
See you tonight.
Yeah. I move to adopt Resolution 23-9, a resolution approving Third Amendment to lease between Park Ridge, Park District and Park Ridge Historical Society Incorporated and directing the execution and delivery thereof.
Second.
Discussion.
Are you going to say anything or no?
As we discussed, the Historical Society had requested a waiver of the remainder of their payment. They have paid us, of course, I can't find it, just looking for it. They have paid us $266,800 of the $416,200. And they, as we discussed, that the Historical Society is a benefit to the community. They've done a lot for the Park District and that is not even, it's hard to put a number towards helping us with all the historical background and data. And they are on our property and we own the building. So, we work with them and they offer a service that is open to all of the community and it's ties with our mission of the Park District. So, those are all considerations, I believe, that when we decided to do this. And then the lease will be revisited in 10 years. So, that's, that's also in what, in the resolution.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it was fairly aggressive of them, in my opinion, when the original agreement was made that they were going to be able to come up with that amount of money. And part of the reason that amount of money is so high is because they have to pay prevailing wages because it's our property. So, it's, you know, they spent 300 and some thousand on, on that little building over there. And, and I'm sure the, you know, the access for handicap access, et cetera. And like, like you said, Gail, they've helped a lot with the development of this property and we've had a good working relationship with them. And I think it's unrealistic to think of an organization that size would have come up with that much money. And we've, you know, talked about this several times and I'm happy for it to be done. We own the building. We will continue to own the building and we benefit. We had to, we had to keep that building and the empty building next door, which, you know, we don't even have money to develop it. So, I'm.
Give it for historical purposes.
Right.
Right.
When, when we got the grant for this property, we had to keep a certain amount of buildings. So, that, that building is being used and it's been upgraded with a hu- huge investment from the Historical Society and I'm glad it's being used. I, I feel bad that the other one is just sitting there. So, I'm, I'm glad that we're doing this and I, I think it's a good partnership and, and it's a benefit to us as well as to them. Have they, so, we, have you talked to them about this and what is their reaction?
They're, they're very grateful.
Okay.
And they have.
You know, they are on a 10-year.
Yes, they, they're 10 years and they're very grateful and they are, you know, talking about the fact that this will allow them to focus now on, you know, doing more for the community and, you know, hopefully doing some bigger fundraising with the goal of, you know, just getting themselves in a good position for the future.
I just want to say that I appreciate them being proactive with them coming to us first and not waiting for the funds to not be paid for the next year. I'm good with renegotiation. I'm good with the terms that was set. I, I still can't get over the forgiveness of the $149,000. They have, to date, paid back two-thirds of what they originally owed. The lease was set to be very long out into the future and I feel like this might be a little a bit too soon. I, I was hoping that we'd come to some sort of decision that kind of helped them along and gave them a little bit of a breather so that they can figure out how to pay back the rest. And probably because of that, I'm probably going to be voting no tonight.
I, you know, there's a lot of circumstances in which I would think along the same ways as Commissioner Matza, but with this particular organization and with this particular situation, I will be voting yes for a lot of the same reasons echoed, echoing Commissioner Grau because, yeah, I mean, if you've ever walked in that other cottage on the property, it's, it's a like uninhabitable dump, basically. And the fact that they poured as much money and effort into fixing it up and making it actually an asset, and I mean, that's our building that they poured all these thousands of dollars and all this effort into fixing up. I mean, I kind of, I look at it in some ways, you know, like if you're renting a house and you fix up the house, you get a deduction on your rent. I kind of see it as a similar analogy and also taking into the account that as a Park Ridge nonprofit concerned with our local history, they are also, and, you know, a unique asset to the community. So, that's why I would deviate from what my normal, my natural tendency would be for the particulars of this situation. And also, yeah, I mean, I do remember last year's discussion and it's just like they're never, when realistically, they're probably not going to be at a place and they've already had to do all these, these other things, like why, let's just be realistic about it is kind of my, my viewpoint. And hopefully, I wish them well and hope that they can continue to exist and continue to preserve Park Ridge history and, you know, be an asset to the community.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm, I hope we start to have a, even a more working relationship with them. And I know that's a policy change. So, I'm looking forward to talking about that in the future where we can help them and help them raise funds and help them with their programming. I'll be voting yes, yeah.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call?
Thank you.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner La Duke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
No.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
We'll turn it back over to Marketing and Public Relations.
Highlights, Margaret. And Human Resources is the same. It's a very busy time for the Human Resources and the Finance Department. Their busy time is end of year. So, we kind of rotate busy times of years between departments. So, that's really what's going on, a lot of end-of-the-year work.
Thank you. And then on to Finance, Commissioner Matza.
Thank you, President Tunnel. Got a lot going on tonight, regular stuff and then some tax levy things. Turn it over to Superintendent Larson.
Great, thank you. The regular stuff starts on page 17 with my finance report. I just wanted to quickly highlight a few things. Just a reminder that the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for 2024 has been posted on our website. There's a copy located here in One Main Park. And then we will be publishing notice in the paper about the hearing on January 11th. And then our public hearing will be held in our January 18th meeting with our adoption of the ordinance after that. So, these are the last three things not highlighted on my budget schedule. So, we'll be doing that the next meeting. I also just wanted to mention, one of the points I talked about, the year on close and audit. I did have this week, our first meeting with an auditor. So, hopefully by next week, I'll have a schedule for the first couple of days of field work. That will, usually happens at the end of January, beginning of February, and then they come back in March for about a week. And I've been involved in the audit, the audit as the accounting manager. So, we spent some time talking about how my role is going to be a little different as the superintendent of finance. And so, that was exciting. And then I'll also be supporting the new accounting manager, Lucy, because this will be her first audit. So, I'll still be, still be really involved in that, which I'm looking forward to. I actually like the audit. I know, it's crazy. I do. I do. It's all about keeping things organized. Makes me happy. And finally, in finance, I mentioned the property taxes. So, in November, we received about 2.4 million of the second installment of property taxes that was delayed. So far in December, we've received about 3 million. So, so, I'm really relieved that we're going to get most of it, if not all, by the end of the year. So, that's very exciting. IT, of course, I want to highlight real quick, Director O'Leary's SIP and Security Class at the Centennial Activity Center was well-attended, very popular. It was a great idea and I just, I really love the way. It was a great idea and I just, I really love the way the IT team also reaches out into the community.
I want to comment, break in on that. I'm having some severe problems with my elderly father and it's security-related and it's finances and everything. And I highly recommend offering that again. You know, if people couldn't make it the first time or if they hear from other people it was good. It's so horrible what is being done to the elderly. And everything's online now so that we can get them so much easier and kudos and help protect our community. It's really sad.
And about the things that she talked about, security and how she put, how she is with them, I think it's just amazing. Like she's, like I, you know, your kids are going to thank me or something like that, right? You know, but she, you know, so it's, it's good. And she said the hands were just all going up afterwards. And Duri said, well, hold the questions to the end. And she said they were all like, all during raising their hands and all swarmed her at the end. And talked a lot about security from what she said, so. Yeah, and I think she said she's going to offer it, I can't remember how often. Again, it's going to happen again, for sure.
I'll let her know, thank you, thank you for those kind words. Are there any other questions about any of the reports in the Board Packet?
All right, I move to approve for payment vouchers in the total amount of $662,764.95.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions about the payment vouchers? No? All right, Mary Beth, you want to do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner Laduke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
All right, on to annual review of tax levy lost and cost.
Okay, I have a memo on page 30 of the Packet that references the next three agenda items. And we'll start out by talking about the tax levy lost and cost. So per our policy, and the county allows us to direct them to add a percentage for property taxes that we, that are uncollectible. We could wait until I get the, the first edit from the county, which is about six months into the tax levy year. But that usually requires a quick turnaround. And so we just kind of have been setting this policy each year annually. I let the county know. And it's a four-year rolling average percentage of uncollected property taxes. And it's based on the information that we publish in the CAFER, so our audit each year. And I attach two charts, which shows our collection percentage since 2009. And then a bar chart with the, just the last four years. And we're proposing to keep that at 2% as we have over the past couple of years.
Any questions, discussions, anyone?
Last year was pretty remarkable.
I know, I know. Yeah.
99.21% collection.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good, okay.
All right, I move to adopt ordinance 23-8, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes of the Park Ridge Park District for the 2023 tax year. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any one, any last minute discussion, tax levy? Mary Beth, you want to do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner Laduke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
I'll read it first and then we'll discuss it. I move to adopt Resolution 23-7, Res- Res- Resolution Providing for the Possible Reduction of Levy and Assessment of Taxes for the Park Ridge Park District, Cook County, Illinois, for the levy year beginning January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2023. Have a second?
Second.
Superintendent Larson, you want to go over what this one provides?
So this situation lets the county know what to do if we've over-leveied. So we've asked for more than we're actually due and where that reduction should be. And we take it out of Recreation because Recreation is the area that has other revenue sources. And so that's, this is just going to be uploaded tomorrow when I upload the, the tax levy ordinance so that it gives direction to the county, they know what to do.
This is proactive so we don't have to wait for them and because it's a very short window when they do come up to us, correct? All right. Any discussion or questions for Superintendent Larson? No? All right, Mary Beth, you do a roll call for this?
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Halting?
Yes.
Commissioner Laduke?
Yes.
Commissioner Matza?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunnel?
All right.
I believe that concludes Finance, thank you. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson, and I will turn it over to Recreation.
Great, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Armour.
Thank you. My report begins on page 42 and highlights all of the fun things going on in November. We're wrapping up the year currently with preschool programs. There's many events for the holidays currently for all ages, November and December. Preschool sings, many Santa events. The exhibition at the ice rink was this past weekend, which was wonderful and much more. The Star Holiday Program was also yesterday. I know this is in the November report, but there was over 180 at the Country Club yesterday. Record-breaking numbers. So that was, it's a really fun event and it's great to see so many people there. The youth basketball program started, so that's always, you know, a very busy time of year in athletics along with everything else that they have going on. I did want to note, not in the report, but our manager at the Fitness Center let us know this week that we reached over the 3,000 number in membership, which hasn't happened since 2019. So it's exciting, you know, a lot of, you know, college kids coming in. But nevertheless, we're really excited, that was kind of a milestone. And he also let me know today, there was an error on the report in, on page 49, but an error in our favor. So the membership card scans were actually at over 13,000 because we were a little perplexed why those were low. And he's like, it was bugging me, so I kept plugging away at it. So the member, the membership card scans in 2023 are actually at 13,323, not 10,688. So that kind of goes along with the numbers that we were seeing. So he just had something toggled wrong. And, you know, with all of these things going on, highlighted in the report and the things that I've told you, we're also working on the camp and the spring brochure, so gearing up for the, the next round of activities. So those are the few things I wanted to mention and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Winds camp registration?
February.
Yeah, I knew it was February.
Six, maybe?
Okay, I'll, I'll look.
Got to mark that on the calendar.
Got to, I got to get that on the whole calendar. To my kids' disappointment.
The swim numbers look really great, too. That's really wonderful. I attended the little ice skating recital on Saturday and I met Chris, the new guy. Yeah, he seemed very excited about his job. And, and I saw, I talked to Jordan Mann a little bit. And it was a nice, it was a nice, you know, show and songs were great and the kids were good. So, yeah, I think there probably is about 50 to 60 kids, I think I counted on the, on the ice. And, but anyway, it was good and I'm looking forward to, you know, when it, when they start doing it again in a couple of years and, yeah. So anyway, but you can, you know, pass along my, you know, my congratulations on a, on a good job.
Will do, thank you. Yes, it was, it was great and some of the, I'm sure you noticed the pair of skaters that are.
Oh, yeah, they were good. Oh, wow. Yeah, I was, I asked him, why didn't he skate? And he says he always, he likes to really just skate with his wife and she was out of town. She, she does the follies or something. Yeah, so I said, oh, because it was, you know, it's always nice to see such an amazing talent, you know? So maybe you should think about solos or something, but, but anyway. Anyway, it was great, enjoyed it. Yeah.
Oh, I guess my one question would be, was I know it's just been a few days, but so far, how are enrollments looking for the next session of, of activities? Yeah, yeah, pretty on par with normal. Yes, great.
I enrolled my kid in volleyball. I had to update my residency. I was like, I could be on the board, but I got to get this guy into volleyball.
I got the notice, too, I got a notice, too.
I was like, oh!
Thank you. All right, so I'll pass it on to Commissioner Bendy for Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Laduke. All right, now we go to Superintendent Wolf.
Thank you. My report begins on page 51 of the Board Packet. As you can see, we're, we're still moving along on some capital projects. The weather's been very favorable for us to continue or for the contractor to continue working on Main Park, which is great. I do actually want to highlight that we did turn in, not in the Board Report, but we did turn in the permit set for South Park. The Auslad project there is in with the city and tomorrow, the permit set will be turned in for Oakton. So, so we're moving along with both of those projects, so. So we're very excited about that. Beyond that, we are still, you know, we're focused on some of the seasonal activities and just waiting for the seasonal weather to show up, such as the ice rinks. We have them set up and ready to go. As soon as the weather changes, we will move quickly on doing anything that we can to make ice, but it's just weather-dependent. And in the meantime, staff is finding their ways around the corners of the buildings and emptying things out so that we can relocate all the things we'll be needing to keep out of Oakton into the corners of the, of the Park District. So kind of working out okay for us this year, the way that it's, the weather's shaping up still. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about anything in my report.
Bid openings today?
Oh, yeah, they were actually yesterday. Yeah, we did have bid openings for site excavation, the building concrete, asphalt tree removal and site concrete. And so as a, as a bid group overall, we had, the overall bid group came in about $600,000 under budget. And so we are running, so far, we're about $2 million under budget on our bids that we've opened so far. We do have another set of bids going out, excuse me. They'll actually be advertised next week, they'll be available January 4th. We'll be opening them on the 24th of January and Wednesday, the 24th. We just organized this actually this afternoon, so I'm running off the top of my head, but those are the dates. And I will provide for you guys that, that set of groups, bid packages. But they did mention that we will have no more than 24 more bid packages with the overall project and that we will probably continue to have bid packages going out up until about summer, until we're completely done. Some of the last ones being things like painting, which will be like, you know, the last, one of the last things that happens in the building, so.
I have a question, are those online? Like you guys used to do them in here, how are the ones under White handled?
So the, how are they opened?
Yeah, like could we watch?
Yeah, yeah, they're open to the public. They're not done, they're not opened online. So the last ones we just opened up the other day were in O'Connor Building. The next ones will be opening up here in the boardroom, so, yeah, so we can, I can share with you the date and time of that.
It's kind of fun to do.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be the, it'll be, it'll be at 1 o'clock on that Wednesday, the 24th, so, of January. Yep. But so overall, heading in the right direction, but it is still early and they know that there's a couple of larger bid packages out there that they anticipate will be over. So while things are trending in our favor, one of the bid packages was even with budget. One of them was about two grand over, everything else was under budget. But they have things for some structural steel, HVAC out there. And there was one other one that they, MEP, Mechanical, Electrical Plumbing. They expect those to be bigger numbers and over budget and that's where we'll probably start to see the swing. So we're still being very cautious with the budget availability.
I have another question, usually when you guys say, you know, the bids came in, but we still have to do background checks or whatever, does White, does that still apply or are these people that White always work, already work with?
So this bid package and this bid set's a little bit different in that the bidders have to be pre-qualified. So it's, they have to fill out a AIA form, I don't remember the exact form, but they are pre-qualified. So in and of itself, now they still do scope review to make sure that they had all the different pieces of the project and the scope in there and so that it's all covered. But they're already pre-qualified to do the work and they're familiar with so far, like 99% of the people bidding the project.
But White does all of that.
They do do all of it.
Which is very nice.
Yeah, but usually you, you would say, you know, it's 1.6 under, but.
But we're still doing background checks.
But you're not really saying but in this case.
No.
I just want to say how nice it is to see nothing to report in the vandalism section, always. But also, I was happy to see the various things being addressed in the sustainability section, including looking again at EV charging stations by Centennial and then looking at the PIP playground surfacing, also in Centennial. I'm, it's nice to see this section and to see the developments that your, your department is looking at.
Yeah, no, I'm happy and I, I have to say Lauren's been a tremendous asset for us in having that position. So thank you for allowing that to happen this year.
I have a question about, when I was inquiring about the refrigeration systems.
Yes.
The note back said there was going to be a meeting with ComEd.
Yes.
With the planning committee on the 15th.
Mm-hmm.
For Oakton, what, how did, how did that go?
So it's, it's ongoing, we do have an application in with ComEd. So there was already a conversation going on between ComEd and White. The way it worked was White had designed the building and the space and then they shared some of that information with ComEd and they evaluated it and came back and said, here's some things that you can do to enhance or improve the space. What they're working on is there's a number of the things that they actually already had incorporated. In fact, as it turns out, the mechanical system, one of the things they suggested with that was a, was a recapture on some, to preheat, to use the water to heat the melt pits for the, where we dump the snow from the Zamboni, as well as to preheat the water for the, for to fill the tank for the Zamboni. Both of those things were already planned into the, to the project, so. From the refrigeration, for the ice rink mechanical. So there's other, those are other things there. So some of the other HVAC systems have like heat recapture so that they're preheating the air that's coming in. They have, there's different levels for lighting, there's, there's like a laundry list of a lot of different things. And so yesterday, in fact, we filled out the, we signed the application so that they could further the conversation because they get to a point where they have these discussions and then you have to fill out the application and submit the application so that they can continue that discussion and then get them the, get White and get us the incentive amounts, so. They're not huge dollar amounts, but, but the way, the way that they work, we're kind of working through and understanding and then we'll understand what kind of a, you know, offset and cost it'll have, but also looking at the cost benefit long-term for savings that we'll have as well.
So ComEd is providing that information or?
ComEd provides some of that information. So they provide what the savings, sorry, they provide a number of what they'll give to us and the savings that they'll provide. And what they provide to us is based on the reduction amount. And then, and then they also identify what they think the savings could be in energy. And so that'll help us understand what we'll have long-term.
That's really cool.
Yeah. So it's, it's ongoing, we're still having these discussions and looking into these things. Yeah.
Just for my own nerdiness.
Sure. Yeah.
And I think there's some that we decided would not make sense, right, already? A couple of them, I can't remember which ones of those were. But we said, you know, let's let them look at them all.
The good thing is that they're giving you the numbers, what the long-term difference is, so you know, like the life cycle costs.
And if we have to put more in capital, yeah.
You make a good decision versus just looking at the initial capital and leaving it at that. So that's, yeah, I can understand some things.
It's like we would have to put X amount more into it.
Like 70 years for it to pay back.
Right, right. And then incentive would be so small and the energy savings is what were.
But I'm glad that they're, that's great that they're giving you that.
Every, like Terry said, it's very, it goes into a lot of detail about a lot of different.
That's cool.
It was a lengthy meeting, it was very informative. And again, I think the other part of it that I was really happy to see and hear was that as we were going through this laundry list, and there was, I don't know, 15 or so different things, White had already done a lot of them, just in their sustainability from the get-go. But, you know, it was a very refreshing. Just in their sustainability from the get-go, but, you know, it was a very refreshing and, and.
And the engineer on there, I mean, we were all, I didn't really listen because he was very technical, right? So, and White has a staff that is just so broad-based, which is great. You know, I mean, they, they brought this guy and he was the one explaining it to us and we are tentatively trying to understand it. Not our area of expertise, but it was very, very interesting, so.
Yeah, so, and we are, we're still looking at a number of different things that aren't set in stone there, so, that aren't even, that are kind of even outside of that, so. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Terry? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Pass on policy to Commissioner Grau?
Uh, no policy for tonight, intergovernmental. Commissioner Halting? Nothing on intergovernmental.
Do we have any communication correspondence? Is there any new business? Move to adjourn the meeting at the Park Board of Park Commissioners. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.